So that it's off the driveway, it will be turned toward the very area of the field.
Thank you. Any discussion? This needs a two-thirds vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes unanimously. Article two.
And Moses, the town authorized, A, the school committee to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of the parcel of land with the building there on known and numbered as thirty-nine Massachusetts Avenue, Harvard, Massachusetts, and described in a deed dated June second, nineteen eighty-two, and reported with the Worcester District Registry of Deeds in Book seven-five-oh-one, page three forty-four, to the select board. And B, the select board to sell, convey, transfer, or otherwise dispose of said parcel of land and/or building.
That's been seconded.
So this pertains to the Bronfield House, you know, the White House that's in the corner of Mass Ave. The school committee will, and the school department needs to use of that house through October of next year. After that, they no longer need it for educational purposes because the district offices are moving into the new school building. What this article does is it authorizes, first of all, to, it affirms a vote of this that the school committee took earlier that at the point when they no longer need it, they would turn it over to the select board, and you'd give me town approval of that. And second of all, it allows us on the select board to run a process where we include all of the pertinent committees in town, the school committee, us, the Bronfield Trust, any other pertinent departments, to look at possibilities of use for the building, you know, on the property, moved off the property, but with our stated goal is to retain the land because it is town land.
Thank you. Discussion?
Pete Jackson, Jacob Gates Road, President of the Bronfield Trustees. I, we have no comment on the actual warrant article, however, we want to remind the selectmen that our position as stated in the February two thousand fourteen letter to the school committee and the select board has not changed. In essence, what I request the select board to do is to bring us into the process from the very beginning so that we can state what our position is, what our restrictions are, in the process in which we have to go with the probate court of Worcester and Attorney General's Office for approval. And our position holds onto that petition. We'd like to go petition along with the town and make it acceptable disposition. As a private citizen, I'd like to convince the select board, and I think Alice is able to it, that there's a process that involves the public that's completely transparent. I've already gotten comments thinking that the Bronfield Trust would be holding meetings. No, that's the position that the select board has taken. I just want to convince them that it's important to keep the public involved from the very beginning. Thanks.
Thank you. There are two mics, so we can alternate between the two as people are cleaning.
Nathan Finch, come on, something. I just want to clarify, this is not to sell the house, this is just transferring it from the school committee to the select board, and the select board will figure out what to do. This is not like getting rid of the house, correct?
What, is this on? Okay. What this does is it, yes, it transfers the governments of the house to the select board. It authorizes the select board to run an open and public process as described, and at the end of that process, the select board will have the right to make the decision.
Okay, thank you.
Ben Guttero, Fairbanks Street. Currently, there's a restricted use on the property for educational purposes. I'd like to understand what the restrictions going forward would be, if any.
The restriction results from, embark sitting here, so I might phone a friend on this one. It is restricted to educational use, and that is what, you know, the town would honor. That any proceeds from any sale of, you know, the house, the property would be returned in use for educational purposes.
Sure, but the land use in general is basically changing from a restricted use to something that we just say the select board can do what they wish.
Mark, now I need your commentary on that.
Go ahead, Mark.
Mark Bonzi, Town Council. As the selectman Valisika just stated, the current restricted use is educational use. That was the result of a nineteen eighty probate court decree that the town and the trustees requested together jointly, so the property could be transferred from the trust to the town to be used for educational purposes. If this vote passes, it'll be, the use will be changed from educational purposes to a surplus land purpose. And as the selectman Valisika said, there'll be a public process where it's determined what the ultimate disposition of the property is going to be. One possibility is to sell the property. That may or may not happen. It may be retained in town use. Keeping in mind, this vote is an authorization, not a mandate at any time. If it is sold, the proceeds have to be used under the court decree for educational purposes, and there's a list of five different purposes for which they must be used. So I hope that adequately answers the question. Vote.
It does. May I add one additional?
Sure, go ahead.
So if I understand that correctly, basically, we as the town are voting here to transfer the type of usage of that property such that we no longer have another town vote on it, and it will be up to the select board in, it's fine, this is.
That, that's.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mark Rickett, here in Shaker Road. Is there a reason why this article could not be split into two votes in case voters are in favor of, for example, part A, but not necessarily in favor of part B today?
The reason why the select board, we are the ones who put this article in, the reason why we put it together was and not stop with just transferring it, we recognize the need to make a decision on what to do with what in effect will be a surplus building, and we did not want to be in the position that we have been in, or that's a select board and the town has been in in the past, when there were surplus buildings of not having a plan in place on what to do with them. So that's why specifically we designed it this way, because we don't want to just leave it hanging without a process in place to explore all uses.
So what would be the public's involvement in the select board's decision-making process for part B?
We haven't designed the process, but I can envision, I mean, number one, as a baseline, it would all be open meetings, because, you know, it would have to be. And like I said, we would involve the school committee, the Bronfield trustees, any interested citizens, you know, and, and again, we haven't designed the process. We could certainly, you know, include, you know, surveys, public input, et cetera.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Beth Rodriguez, and I have recently moved back to my childhood home on one thirty-one Old Littleton Road. I thought, I've just recently moved here, and I have not been involved in this process, so I apologize for jumping in at the last minute, but I feel like somebody should be speaking for the house, for the Bronfield House itself. And I thought about that, and I thought, well, it probably should be me. My grandfather was Al Dunlap, who was the principal of the school for thirty-seven years, moved into that house when it was in nineteen eighteen, I believe. For thirty-seven years was the principal and taught half of the classes and made the bats for the baseball team, and it was a family affair, raised a couple of kids there. My father, James Dunlap, was born in the Bronfield House and served as a Bronfield trustee, as well as many other things in town. Anyway, so I, I am just trying to make a point that I do not want the history of this house, this beautiful house in that beautiful location, to go lightly. I know I've come late in the process here, I apologize for not being involved all along, but I would like to just request that as we go forward, however it is, that, that building not be discarded lightly. And I look forward to being involved in the process, and I hope other people will also stand up for this beautiful place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Morton, Bolton, eighty-seven Bolton Road. Some of us have some credibility issues with the select board in terms of openness, given the recent experience we've had with the Complete Streets Program, and how that went, and how the, the process went. So I have a suggestion, an amendment, a, a, propose an amendment to this article that requires the town council, the town select board, to come back to a general special town meeting, or some town meeting for approval, once a final plan and disposition has been developed and sorted out, and request then that the town, the town approves the final plan rather than meeting with the select board. So I would propose an amendment to this article that says, that adds, that we, once plans are finalized, the select board come to town meeting with a specific proposal.
Okay, hold on. You're proposing as a friendly amendment that the.
Sure, friendly is good.
So let's, let them debate for a second, see if they'll accept that. But I believe, I'm just going to verbalize again, that you're asking for post-decision of everybody coming together and select board recommendation, it comes back to town meeting for a vote.
For an upper down.
For an upper down. Okay? So the amendment, the proposed friendly amendment is that after select board's decision?
Yes.
On what to do, that they come back to town meeting for a vote on it?
And we'll accept that as a friendly amendment. It was not a unanimous vote, but we do accept it.
You accept it as a friendly amendment. Okay. Would you do me a favor? Would you come write the friendly amendment on this document? Right here. Thank you. While that's going on, is it about the amendment?
Well, I'd like to ask if the amendment could be rewritten.
I will, once it's written.
And Mike Thursday, Mass Ave.
Thank you. So I'll read the friendly amendment. We will vote on whether or not to accept this amendment. It needs a two-thirds vote. No, I don't need to? Because it's friendly? Okay. It's automatic. Okay. So the amendment again has written that after the select board develops a plan, that plan is returned to town meeting for a final decision. So that is the amendment. Friendly amendment that's been accepted by the select board. Okay, we're with you.
Mike Thursday, Mass Ave. So I guess following that new amendment, I'd just like to confirm one thing. The select board will not have unanimous or unilateral decision-making capability to determine the use of the land or the building without coming to a town meeting and getting any.
That is correct.
Majority vote from the town.
That is correct. But, I'm not going to say whether it's majority or two-thirds yet, but yes, because I don't know what's going to come back yet.
Okay.
Okay, but it will come back to town for a vote. Would you do me a favor and clean the mic? Mike? Thanks.
Mr. Moderator, Paul Green, Old Littleton Road. We are in the midst of an historic drought in this area, the likes of which I've never seen in this area. We have forest fires raging in various parts of the country. We have a house that undoubtedly has lead paint on it, and probably has asbestos inside it. And I was just over there this morning to verify what I'm about to say. We have vegetation, major trees that practically touch the house. We have a major pine tree that is within twenty feet of the house. It's going to require taking down a great deal of vegetation in order to do what, at least one selectman, and a town administrator has proposed, which is to burn the house down, should no one purchase it. Plus, we are in debt for something like fifty-four million dollars for our beautiful new, nearly complete elementary school. And so I cannot for the life of me understand why anybody in town government would think it is wise to burn this building down. And for that reason, I oppose this article, and I will vote against it, because the best time to get off the train that's going to the wrong destination is before it leaves the station. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you please clean the mic? Thank you.
Willie Whitman, twenty-seven Willa Road. I'm wondering if the amendment can include annual town meeting. I would hate to have a decision as important as what will happen to the building and land be decided by a group of maybe this size. You may not rate this town meeting.
Yeah, I, I, you guys accepting annual town meeting? And who? Terry, you okay with annual town meeting? The word annual in front of your town meeting?
I understand. What I'm not clear about is whether that will interrupt the necessary process. I appreciate the fact that we need a big group.
I know.
Sorry, Terry Morton, eighty-seven Bolton Road. Appreciate the fact we need a big group. I, I think I would leave it up to, I think we don't need that addition. I don't mind it, but I think I'd leave it up to the select board to decide whether it should be a special meeting for purposes that we don't yet know, or whether they can wait for an annual town meeting. Certainly, the annual town meeting is preferable. Is that, that's not.
I just, it's your amendment, so I wanted to make sure the wording was correct as you proposed.
I'd rather leave it as it is, but the.
Okay.
Leave it up to the select board to decide if it's town meeting, whether it's annual or special.
Okay, and what was the?
We do not accept that as a friendly town meet, as a friendly amendment, because it would handcuff us for some possible disposal of the building. For example, if we were to find a buyer who wanted the house to move it, thus keeping it historically intact, which would, would be a great preference, we may not be able to do that in time with an annual town meeting. It would call a special town meeting for that purpose. So, no, we don't accept that. Can I just make one comment in addition to that?
Well, are you, are you okay with withdrawing?
Well.
That language or not?
Actually, let's, well, if they're not accepting it, I can add it, right?
If they're not accepting it, then we can put it to a vote to see if the town accepts it.
Oh, well, let's, yeah, we'll try that first.
Okay, so I need you to come up, document what you're asking for. Mark, is this two-thirds?
No.
That's majority. Okay. We have to address the, the amendment.
It's clarifying language to the amendment to the amendment.
Let me hear. Go ahead.
Dan Bailey, fifteen, Littleton Road. Subject to the approval of town meeting, a majority of votes, one or the other. That's a friendly amendment to the amendment.
So, we're going to take a vote on whether or not to include the following language into the friendly amendment that's already been accepted. So the new language would read after, that after the select board develop a plan, that plan is returned to an annual town meeting for final decision. All those in favor of adding the word annual?
Can I speak to it?
Sure, go ahead.
Bruce Snickers from Stowe Road. I simply want to point out that if the decision of the select board is at all comp, uh, controversial, it won't be a small meeting. If it isn't controversial, then who worries about a small meeting? But the point being that in real estate, if you have a buyer in hand, you wait potentially twelve months or close to it, to ask the buyer to do that is to risk very much what you're trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Bailey, fifteen, Littleton Road. Given that the disposition of other buildings in town, I don't recall, were proposed to be that they be lit on fire and burned, be interested to know the vote of the select board just now, if the chair could be inquired as to the vote on the amendment.
The amendment on the floor is about annual town meeting. It has nothing to do with how it's being disposed of.
No, that, how they voted to accept the amendment.
That's, on how they voted to accept the, the word annual included?
The chair indicated it wasn't.
I understand. So you want to know what the, number three to two, whatever, on who accepted annual?
Correct, thank you.
You said it was not a unanimous?
No, the, the part that was not unanimous was returning it to town meeting at all. It was the first amendment. I mean, it was the first friendly motion that was not unanimous. There were four of us who voted for that, and Select, Selectman Scler voted against it.
And what was, what was?
For this one, we are unanimous that we do not want it specified that it be annual town meeting.
Okay. Okay, with that, voting on the amendment to include the word annual in front of town meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed? This amendment does not pass. So we are back to the friendly amendment that was already accepted. Is there any other discussion about this article? Okay, with that, we will then vote on article number two, with the addition of the friendly amendment, that it will be returned to town meeting for a vote for a final decision after the select board has developed that plan. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes by two-thirds. Thank you. Article number three, the Bronfield School Ramp.
Nathan Finch, Cobden Hill Road. I have a big town transfer from the Capital Stabilization and Investment Fund, a sum of three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars to be expended in conjunction with available funds received from Devens, an amount of one hundred and fifty thousand, and fifty thousand from the Miriam Shaw Trust to construct a new ramp at the Bronfield School, said sum of money to be spent with the approval of the school committee, provided any grants and funds we receive for said projects shall reduce the amount transferred from Capital Stabilization and Investment Fund by up to one hundred and fourteen thousand of such grants, with fifty percent of the grants in excess of one hundred and fourteen thousand, if any. Further reducing the amount so transferred and the other fifty percent of said excess grant funds, reducing said funds received from Devens and the Miriam Shaw Trust in proportion to amounts of any remaining funds at the end of said, returned to their respective funding sources.
It's been seconded.
Okay, so the ramp back there, you barely can see, this is to replace it. We brought up in the fall, I guess we wrote it down, so they, they backed with a revised plant, makes it smaller, and reuses much of the existing structure. This is going to be paid out of money from capital stabilization and the school's Devens Fund and Miriam Shaw Trust, so it's not going to raise taxes. We are, the school is applying for a grant, the same grant that they, that they applied for, for the old library ramp, and the way it's being split is that it's going to reduce the amount of money that comes from capital stabilization until they're both, two hundred thousand, and then they both go down even then. That's the main language.
Any discussion? Okay, this requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor? All opposed? This passes by two-thirds. Article number four.
I mean, did the town transfer from the Capital Stabilization and Investment Fund a sum of six thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars to purchase a new computer system to be used with the supervisory control and data automation system, which sum of money shall be used with funds previously appropriated to update this data system and shall, shall be spent by the Towns Department of Public Works with the approval of the select board to name any funds to be returned to their funding source.
Hold on. It's been seconded. Okay?
This is updating the computer system that controls the water, I believe, and the ones there is very old, and these are replaced. They already have some money locked over, so we just need to add a bit more to cover the costs.
Any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes unanimously. Article number five, Emergency Rental Assistance Program.
Didi Chavron, Stowe Road, Chair CPC. I move, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approved the transfer of twenty thousand dollars from Community Preservation Fund, unspecified reserves, to the Harvard Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund, for the purpose of creating an emergency rental assistance program for those qualified occupants living in low to moderate income housing, to cover the implementation and advi- and administration of a COVID emergency rental assistance program for the town of Harvard.
It's been seconded?
This is a program that we are, for which CPC funds, which have a state contribution, qualify. We have taken a couple of votes to work closely with the Affordable Housing Trust and make sure that folks who've been financially adversely impacted by the pandemic get some rental release, relief rather. It is, it is bounded, there are qualifications that, that will be built into the, the guidelines and the policy and the program, which however, needs to be designed and administered by the Affordable Housing Trust. So, we're just the funding mechanism for this. We want to take initiative to support the Affordable Housing Trust in, in doing this.
Thank you. Discussion?
Bonnie Huedorfer, 338, Stone Road. I applaud the CPC and the Affordable Housing Trust for taking this initiative and for using the unrestricted reserves to do so. I just have a question, and that is the language refers to living in low and moderate income housing. Are we talking about what qualifies as low and moderate income housing now? Fox, Low, Low, or the Youngs? Or is it people with low and moderate incomes who live in the private market and might have been affected?
Thanks for the question. We, you know, that remains to be determined. I mean, those will definitely qualify. There are, there are other towns who have adopted similar ERAP programs, which are, there's a great deal of variation in how, in the specifics of the implementation and the guidelines thereof. We've been looking with particular interest to the model set up by the town of, is it Newton, Newton, right? Which seems very appropriate to our town. Newton's program includes both rental and owned units, but the qualifications remain that the, the people applying qualify for, for low income, under low income guidelines. And, and it's also, it's, it's bounded by time, so, you know, I don't remember, I think it's through October, is it October of next year? What is it? Three months, three months, thank you. So, does that answer the question?
Yeah, it does. I just, because the affordable housing developments may have certain protections built in.
Right.
So, just important in order to maximize the benefit of the fund to be, to build them some flexibility, which is absolutely...
That's, that's the intention, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alice from Muscat, 84, Warren. I happen to be the select board representative on the Affordable Housing Trust, and I just want to put out there that anyone who is very interested in seeing this initiative or any others of, you know, regarding affordable housing, please volunteer to serve. We only have, it's a five-member trust. Currently, we have four, but we're going to lose a member, which will bring us down to three, and we've been trying to get a full membership. So, please, if you are interested, just email me or email Julie at Town Hall. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Michelle Catalina, Old Littleton Road. We, we put this together, obviously, in the emergency, the CPC had been meeting regularly, but when we put this together, one of the things that we didn't realize was the number of people who are, who have been rentals in this town who might be, the qualifications are also senior, senior elderly. And I was wondering, I don't know that we have enough form here, so it has to be voted on by everyone, about the addition of the word mortgage after low, 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 low income rental and mortgage to make three months of mortgage payments potentially for someone who's lost their job due to COVID.
Who's here from, who's here from CPC? I don't think we do have four. I think there are four, five. Oh, we have. All right, let's, let's try. The committee accepts the friendly amendment.
Okay, so, I need you, yeah, I need the friendly amendment written. And that is to insert the word "mortgage"...
And mortgage after the word rental.
Okay. So, it would read, "I move to, that the town approve the transfer of $20,000 from Community Preservation Fund unspecified reserves to the Harvard Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund for the purpose of creating an emergency rental and mortgage assistance program for those qualified occupants living in low to moderate income housing to cover the implementation administration of a COVID, COVID emergency rental assistance program for the town of Harvard." And that's been accepted as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mark Keterian, Chicago. Just have a question about that amendment. So, the tail end of that sentence that refers to low to moderate income housing, that wouldn't necessarily apply to mortgage payers, correct?
Why would it not?
I'm asking a question.
Yes, it should.
It does?
Yes. You can live in low to moderate income housing and have a mortgage.
Okay, thank you.
Can, yes, thank you. Please leave the mic. I missed that. Okay. With that, we are then going to have a vote. It's a majority vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes unanimously. Article Six. This is to amend the fiscal year 2021 omnibus budget.
Alice from Muscat, 84, Warren. I move that the town amend the fiscal year 2021 omnibus budget, adopted on June 20th, 2020, under Article Three of the warrant from the 2020 Annual Town Meeting, per the information provided in your warrant on page two. The total revenue amendment would be $328,686, offset by a total expense amendment of $328,686.
It's been seconded?
So, basically, this was to provide the funding that needed because the override did not pass and all of the expenses that you see here that are being cut, you know, were discussed throughout the whole process by the Budget Review Committee, the Select Board, the associated town departments, so that we would now have a balanced budget.
Any discussion?
Bruce Nicholson still wrote, "From what I read in the press, a part of this health insurance item is going to be to reduce our contribution to the fund for the OPEB, OPEB retirees. Is that correct?"
That is not correct.
Okay.
This health insurance is savings from changing the individual contribution. We all decided not to reduce the contribution to our OPEB.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Bruce, clean the mic for me? Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, with that, we need a majority. All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes unanimously. Article Seven.
I move that the town vote to amend the fiscal year 2021 omnibus budget, adopted on June 20th, 2020, under Article Three of the warrant for the 2020 Annual Town Meeting as follows. That the stabilization fund total revenue be changed from $0 to $200, and that the reserve fund to...
$200,000?
$200,000, I'm sorry.
Not $200, yeah.
My, my mistake. And the reserve fund total expense be changed from $350,000 to $550,000.
It's been seconded?
So, this was, knowing that there may be additional COVID particular related expenses in the upcoming budget year that we don't know about right now, we wanted to provide every budget holder with the flexibility that should there might be for some unexpected expenses, the $200,000 goes into the reserve fund, and the reserve fund is managed by applications to the Finance Committee, so we could solve any emergency issues without having to call a town meeting. The Finance Committee could review and approve those requests.
Thank you. Any discussion? This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes unanimously. Article Eight.
I move that the town amend the fiscal year 2021 sewer enterprise fund budget, adopted on June 20th, 2020, under Article 15 of the warrant for the 2020 Annual Town Meeting as follows. The sewer use charges revenue amendment, the amendment is to change it from $150,000 down to $125,000, and similarly, on the expense side, the direct expense would be reduced from $150,000 down to $125,000.
It's been seconded?
This change is necessary because after reviewing the current users and the user charges that would be generated during this budget year, it was found it was $125,000, not $150,000, so thus the revenue change, and the way that the, the entire fund works that you have to mirror the expenses, the direct expenses to that change.
Thank you. Any discussion? With that, this requires a majority. All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes unanimously. Article Nine.
Justin Brown, Park Lane, Chair of the Planning Board. The Planning Board has prepared an amendment to the protective bylaw, Chapter 1.5, Section 57, senior residential development. The prepared amendment represents a lot of hard work, creating a zoning solution to address the need for smaller-scale housing, a need identified in the 2016 master plan and the 2017 housing production plan. Due to the diverse needs of the community and effective response is unlikely to be simple, the Planning Board has decided to promote greater public understanding of a complex bylaw prior to a spirited debate at town meeting and plans to return in the spring after more public outreach. I move that the town table this article.
That's been seconded? What? Anything else?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. Any discussion? This requires a majority. All those in favor? All those opposed? This passes unanimously. With that, those of you that had on your bets that we'd be done by 1:00, you win. Motion to adjourn is made. It's been seconded? Oh, motion to dissolve, I'm sorry. We should have done the adjournment last time. This is dissolving. Motion to dissolve? Thank you. Has it been seconded? Thank you. All those in favor? We are there. All those opposed? 12:52. Look at that. You have to stay.